Good evening. I really have to start this meeting now. So, welcome, everyone, to the Samamish City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, April 15th, 2025. If we could have the clerk call us to order. I'm calling you to order, actually, but we're going to do roll call.
Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Kaylee Clark. Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Rosheen O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I move that we excuse Kaylee Clark for tonight's meeting.
So moved? Oh, seconded.
It's been moved as seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Motion carries. Thank you. Councilmember Trine, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Deputy Mayor Lamb, do you happen to have the land acknowledgement handy?
Yep. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Kosilish peoples and have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. I'm now looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved as seconded? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll now go to public comment, and we'll start with individuals in the room. Nicola Wies, please.
Okay, there we go. I'm not here today to ask you to come to the mud run. I'll be coming for that later. I hope you all have August 2nd marked off on your calendar, or if you're going to help build, August 1st. Today, I'm here to ask you about some sort of something for the road that I lived on. I live on 211th Way. It is one block west of East Samamish Park, which is west of Meade Elementary. It is one block away from an elementary school, a city park, a Montessori school, and two daycares. And yet, people drive on my road going 35, 40 miles an hour all day long. Kaylee Clark was over at my house at the sharing plant shelves and actually commented on it one day. It's ridiculous, and I think everybody in the neighborhood has seen people go off the road around the Hairpin Turn at least once. It's happened multiple times in the times that I've lived there. People's animals have been hit. And I'm hoping that there's something that can be done. I know that speed bumps are not the favorite of the fire department and the ambulance, although I do know that as you go down Mormon Hill, go straight through the roundabout, on that road, there is a low-speed bump, and there are places where it is flat, so that would allow emergency trucks to go through. Maybe something like that can be done. Maybe a very small roundabout could be put down just to slow people down. I'm open to suggestions, but we need something. It's only a matter of time before people get hurt, and thank you.
Thank you. Mary Comstock.
Thank you. My name is Mary Comstock, and I'm the regional manager for one of the largest and busiest libraries in the King County library system, our neighbor next door. I should say, your neighbor next door, the Samamish Library. I know all of you know that since the pandemic, when we had to close for a while, then do curbside, then reopen at reduced hours, then add some hours, we have not been able to be open the same number of days that we used to be. And tonight, I am here to announce, very excitedly, that starting on April the 27th, and I have a big poster here, the Samamish Library is going to be open seven days a week, once again. We are absolutely thrilled to bring Sundays back. I don't know how often you're in the library, but it's very busy. And for us to bring back that seventh day, we're just very excited to be able to serve the whole community, and most importantly, our students, for whom Sunday can be the panic day. School is starting Monday. So we are back, and we're thrilled, and we'd love to see you over there. So the other thing I want to tell you is later in the year, I'm going to hope to be on your agenda to give you a report about everything that's happening at your Samamish Library. Thank you very much, and hopefully, we'll see you on April 27th.
Thank you. Michelle Dubois.
Hi. So I can't speak off the cuff like Nicola, so I have my notes. I live just down the road from Nicola, and when we purchased our home in Shannonwood in 1996, it was a safe, quiet neighborhood. The main road, 211th Way, was dead-ended. It dead-ended into a beautiful wooded area. Almost immediately after Sterlingwood and Timberline Ridge opened in 1999, connecting Shannonwood and Timberline, we started having problems. Speeders have continuously been coming through our neighborhood, and we have voiced our concerns now for 25 years. As Samamish has grown, of course, so too has the traffic and the number of speeders coming through our neighborhood. We've been continuously told by city people that are out there that we send notes to, that people don't speed on our road. I can tell you that is absolutely not true. Many drivers speed there. I would hazard to say, most drivers speed there, and significantly above the speed limit. When the city last repaved our road, we asked for roundabouts or something to help, some calming device, and we were told, "Oh, no, we're going to draw white lines down the side of your road. That will slow traffic on your street." That has done nothing to slow the traffic on our street. In fact, I have watched people use that space between that white line and the sidewalk as another lane going down 211th Way. It isn't an extra lane. It is incredibly dangerous. We have the added nuisance of the young people, especially from Timberline or Timberline Ridge, riding their motorized bikes and doing willies going down our street. I've seen them tagged going over 30 miles per hour by that little speed sign that is down in Sterling Ridge. We have blind areas at both ends of the street. There's a hill, and there's the corner over by the park. I cannot tell you how dangerous this is, and as Nicola mentioned, how many close calls we've had. We are neighbors who stand outside and talk to one another. People walk their children to school. Elderly people walk and use the park every single day. It's only a matter of time before there is a very significant and tragic incident on 211th Way. Roundabouts, speed humps like are down by Blackwell. There's roundabouts in Hampton Woods. Please, please consider what options we might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Stickney.
Jelly Bellies.
Remember that being in our council rules, however, might be important to add that.
Well, sure they are. Good evening, City Council. Paul Stickney, Samamish. This is the fifth in the end of a series on these topics. I handed out jelly beans, but these commemorate a past President of the United States, Ronald Reagan. And his famous quote was "Trust, but verify." I ask you to keep that in mind. 93 million miles, that's how far it is from the Earth to the Sun. None of us wake up and are pissed at that number because the number is irrelevant. The fact that we live in a habitability zone, that is relevant. Keep that in mind. In Samamish, housing supplies, I assert, are not in the habitability zone. For 23,000 households and 7,000 workforce jobs over cycle of life and generational housing needs, our community has extreme undersupplies of affordable housing type A from 175,000 to 500,000, market rate from 500,000 to 1.4, call that a B housing. C housing is market rate in condos over 1.5. We don't need a lot, but some. And D, we have oversupplies of large, single-family homes. On a citywide scale, my research shows that the shortages range between 10 and 26, depending on how you analyze it, 10 to 26,000. I propose the city add 5,000 B and C housing units alongside the 2,100 A units in the comp plan for 7,100 total. This would achieve 70% of the lowest threshold for optimal housing supplies, and those 7,100 would have the same effect from traffic as 1 in 4 approximately 1,700 housing units from a traffic perspective. And this number is about 1/3 of the housing growth Samamish has seen since incorporation from 1999 to 2024. And in this approach, I bring solutions to problems, not problems to solutions. Our community needs to pivot fearlessly using the power of common cause to implement a thorough, rigorous, and fair approach to set habitability supply numbers that are trusted and verified by the community for A, B, and C housing. We are 10 to 20 years overdue from starting this righteous, optimal cycle of life and generational housing supply correction. It's high time for Samamish to make sustainable A, B, and C housing supplies a number-one priority. And as Captain Picard said on Star Trek, "Make it so." Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the room that wanted to speak that did not have a chance to sign up? And if not, we'll move to online comment.
Per our reasonable accommodation, those who have pre-registered by 5 o'clock today, please raise your hand if you wish to speak. So if you do wish to speak, you'll be given the opportunity to be a panelist on your screen, and you'll have to accept that. Kevin?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Good evening, City Council members. My name is Kevin Schmellick, and I've lived in Samamish for the past 10 years. I'm here tonight to surface a concern that's come up during a project guidance review with the city's development team. For years, we've dreamed of building a house in the local area that could accommodate our family over time and properly accommodate for medical conditions and disabilities for both our parents and other family members. We found a perfect property, a 3.7-acre lot zoned R1 on the north side of Rock Meadow, which we purchased in October 2024. Our intent was to rebuild a home where the existing single-family residence is located for our family. Due to the disabilities already mentioned, our goal is to build a house that can accommodate walkers and wheelchairs. But during the project guidance reviews, we found that as of January 1st, 2025, there is now a maximum building footprint of 3,000 square feet. There is not a way to fit a house for our family of five-plus parents and family members on a single-level home with an attached garage within 3,000 square feet, which is that maximum building footprint that currently is the requirement. Additionally, there are no exceptions or footnotes for this new code requirement. The workaround for the current code is to construct several multi-story buildings that are all less than the 3,000-square-foot building footprint max, which would require an elevator. Not only does this create safety concerns, but it also adds unnecessary installation and maintenance costs. The only remaining option for a single-floor home is a narrowly construed variance process, which was the comment for a city planner, that will end up costing more in fees and costs and time for the project, which has an unknown response from the city as we're currently working on this today. Totally understand the affordable housing, and that we view that that's important as well as a core theme for the city. But blanket regulations like this 3,000-square-foot building max footprint across all zoning districts without any exemption criteria is not the proper method to achieve this intent. I request that the city consider updating this 3,000-square-foot max building footprint code to properly consider edge cases such as ours and others, as well as consider other alternatives instead of this limitation that both promote affordable housing while also allowing continued development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's all for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved?
It's been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now moving to presentations and proclamations. Let's see. For the first one, Councilmember Sid Gupta, would you like to make a motion to do a resolution reaffirming the city's support for our immigrant and refugee neighbors?
Yes, I would like to move. City Samamish, Washington, approved Resolution Number R2025-1105, a resolution of the City of Samamish City Council reaffirming the city's support for our immigrant and refugee neighbors. Whereas, Samamish is a welcoming community that values diversity, equity, justice, and human rights for all; and whereas the City of Samamish, city, fosters a culture and environment where immigrant and refugee community members can fully participate in and be integrated into the social, civic, and economic fabric of Samamish; and whereas, more than 1/3 of Samamish residents were not United States citizens at birth, and approximately 40% of Samamish residents speak a language other than English at home, according to American Community Survey estimates; and whereas, immigrants and refugees contribute significantly to the local economy, with immigrant households contributing $6.5 billion in state and local taxes in Washington, according to the American Immigration Council; and whereas, city employees serve all residents and make city services accessible to all, regardless of immigration status, and cannot withhold services based on race, color, religious creed, national origin, ancestry, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, age, genetic information, disability, political affiliation, military service, or diverse cultural and linguistic backgrounds; and whereas, on July 19th, 2022, the City Council adopted Resolution Number R2022-963, establishing the city's Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, DEIB program, which directed the city manager to keep DEIB as a top priority in the process of budget development and the operation of city business; and whereas, on October 4th, 2022, the City Council adopted Resolution Number R2022-969, establishing seven goals to guide the city's work with the DEIB goals stating, "Advance diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging in a measurable way throughout the community and in the city government's policies, projects, and services." And whereas, on July 16th, 2024, the City Council adopted Resolution Number R2024-1061, adopting a racial equity commitment and vision outlining the city's commitment to eliminating racial inequities within our organization and the community we serve; and whereas, the city is committed to continuing building a welcoming, safe, and hate-free environment where all immigrants and refugees are welcomed, accepted, and integrated; and to encourage business leaders, civic groups, and residents to join in a community-wide effort to adopt policies and practices that promote integration, inclusion, and equity; and whereas, the city values the diverse community that it serves and reaffirms its support for its immigrant and refugee neighbors. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Samamish, Washington resolves as follows. Section 1. The City of Samamish reaffirms its commitment to welcoming and actively supporting immigrants and refugees from all nationalities, religions, and backgrounds with policies, programs, and resources that foster inclusion, meaningful participation, and economic opportunity for all. Section 2. The city manager will establish policies to ensure that no person accessing city programs or services is required to disclose their immigration status, and that any such information, if obtained, is treated as confidential and sensitive, consistent with the Keep Washington Working Act and other applicable state laws. Section 3. In recognition that immigrants and refugees of all immigration statuses are a contributing and integral part of Samamish, the city will use terms such as resident or community member instead of citizen unless the use of citizen is legally or contextually required. Section 4. The city manager will seek to maintain, refine, or develop city policies that advocate for and provide support for all immigrants and refugees who may face severe adverse effects of newly adopted federal laws or policies.
Thank you, Councilmember Gupta. Do you want to speak? Have any additional comments to your motion for this resolution? Pardon? Did you get a second? I'm not. We're not.
Do we need a second for discussion?
Need a second then, yes.
Second.
Great. Would you like to speak to your motion? This resolution?
I will just say, as noted in the resolution, Samamish is an incredibly diverse community. I think that's represented on our council. I think that is what makes our community strong. I am proud to be a member of this council. I'm proud to be a resident of Samamish. I'm glad to be bringing this forward today, and I would ask for the community's support.
Deputy Mayor Lamb?
So I support this resolution. I think it's important because, given the current climate, you know, the federal climate, and contrary to what the current administration says, the vast, vast majority of immigrants are not criminals. I am a daughter of immigrants. I am first-generation Asian-American, and my parents came here. And they came here for the same reason the vast majority of immigrants do, and that is in search of a better life and opportunities. My parents ended up opening up a Chinese restaurant. They had workers, and it was a stable place for many people to work. They paid taxes, and they contributed to their community. So for me, this resolution affirms that, as a city, we will continue to support our immigrant community and refugees for those that are escaping war and persecution. Thank you.
Other council members? Are we good? All right. I will just say briefly that we had some concern. We didn't want to highlight or put organizations that support refugees in an awkward or difficult position. So we are delighted, in fact, tonight, to have Alicia Spinner, Executive Director of The Circle, who is here with us tonight to receive this resolution. The Circle is a trusted local nonprofit dedicated to serving the immigrant and refugee community on the east side. They play an essential role in connecting families to vital resources, offering workshops, language classes, and hosting cultural events that celebrate the rich diversity of our community. We are happy to partner with The Circle by providing grant funding to support their amazing work. And we are so happy to have Alicia here to receive this resolution. So with that, we will take a vote. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And if we could go ahead and present that to you and take a quick photo, that would be wonderful with the council. Councilmember Stewart, would you like to provide a resolution for LGBTQIA2S+ please?
Yes, I move that we pass a resolution for the City of Samamish City Council reaffirming the city's support for our LGBTQIA2S+ neighbors.
It's been moved?
Seconded.
Seconded?
Okay. Whereas, the City of Samamish is committed to fostering a community where all individuals are treated with dignity, equity, and respect, regardless of sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. And whereas, LGBTQIA2S+ individuals continue to face discrimination, violence, and systemic barriers, including harmful rhetoric and legislation that seek to undermine their rights, restrict access to health care and education, and threaten their safety, well-being, and legal protections. And whereas, the city commits to protecting and advocating for the rights of LGBTQIA2S+ individuals by rejecting policies and actions that promote discrimination, harm, or inequality, and embraces and supports Washington's Law Against Discrimination, Chapter 49.60 RCW. And whereas, on July 19th, 2022, the City Council adopted Resolution R2022-963, establishing the city's Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging program, which directed the city manager to keep DEIB as a top priority in the process of budget development and the operation of city business. And whereas, on October 4th, 2022, the City Council adopted Resolution R2022-969, establishing seven goals to guide the city's work with the DEIB goals stating, "Advance diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging in a measurable way throughout the community and in the city government's policies, projects, and services." And whereas, the city is committed to recognizing the dignity of all its residents, including the right of all community members to live in a city that does not subject them to unlawful prejudicial treatment or discrimination. And whereas, the city proudly proclaims June as Pride Month, raises the Progress Pride flag at City Hall throughout the month of June, and hosts an annual Pride Month celebration at City Hall in partnership with community organizations to honor and uplift our LGBTQIA2S+ neighbors. And whereas, the city is committed to continue building a welcoming, safe, and hate-free environment where all LGBTQIA2S+ community members are welcome and accepted. Whereas, the city recognizes the inherent worth and equal rights of all people, including LGBTQIA2S+ individuals, and seeks to provide a safe and welcoming environment for those who reside in or visit our city. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Samamish, Washington, resolves as follows. Section 1. The city reaffirms its commitment to LGBTQIA2S+ people and will continue working to ensure that all individuals, regardless of sex, sexual orientation, or gender identity, feel safe and supported, including through visible actions such as celebrating Pride Month and supporting inclusive community events to honor LGBTQIA2S+ identities and experiences. The city strongly believes in and affirms the right of individuals to obtain and provide gender-affirming care that is legal in Washington State, engage that is legal in Washington State, engage in speech or expression supporting LGBTQIA2S+ people, embrace and express their authentic gender and sexuality, to define what gender and family means to them, including the right to marry, and express gender with or without regard to sex assigned at birth. The city affirms its intent that no city resources, such as city property or time spent while on duty by a covered employee, be used for investigation, assisting in investigation, or detention of an individual on the basis of exercising their rights identified in Section 2 of this resolution. The city affirms its intent that whenever the city collects information about an individual's sex or gender, it will not request sex assigned at birth. The city affirms its intent to oppose legislation or actions at the state or federal level that threaten the rights, safety, or dignity of LGBTQIA2S+ individuals. The city affirms its intent to continue ongoing engagement and collaboration with local LGBTQIA2S+ community and cultural leaders to reduce barriers to accessing resources and support for LGBTQIA2S+ individuals and organizations. The city affirms its intent to conduct regular reviews of its policies, practices, and public services to ensure they are inclusive, equitable, and affirming for LGBTQIA2S+ individuals. The city affirms its intent to continue to celebrate and uplift the voices and contributions of LGBTQIA2S+ individuals through public events, education, and partnerships with local organizations.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to this resolution?
I very much would. Similar to the previous resolution, I am proud to be a community member and a council member in a city that we really stand up for what we believe in. And our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is not just, it's not just symbolic. It's important, and it's real. I just got back from a trip visiting colleges in our country and outside of our country, and it was, it was heartening to see those who were standing up for what they believe in, and it was very sad to see those who were afraid and were being threatened and bullied and in some ways blackmailed to not be able to stand up for their beliefs and their freedoms, which I can't think of anything more fundamentally American. So I'm very proud to support this resolution.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? If not, then I will move to ask if Morgan Witten, the volunteer at Pride Across the Bridge, is available to receive this resolution for LGBTQIA2+
Do we need to vote first?
Oh, and we need to vote first. You know, let's vote, shall we? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to recognize, finally, Morgan Witten, a volunteer at Pride Across the Bridge, who is here with us tonight to receive this resolution. Pride Across the Bridge serves as East King County with a mission to create a strong and inclusive community, one where everyone feels safe, supported, celebrated, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. Their advocacy ensures that every LGBTQIA2S+ individual in our city is seen and valued and uplifted. Thank you, Morgan, for being here to receive this resolution and for your support of our community. And we're in luck. We're having yet another presentation. So this one is the Kokoni Work Group Kokoni Salmon Returns for 2024-2025 spawning season. This will be a great presentation. Looking forward to it.
All right. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, good. We can hear you just fine. I was just gonna do a quick introduction, Allison. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council members. I'm Greg Stamatyo, the Deputy Director of Public Works for Samamish. This will be a brief introduction, as I am not a Kokoni expert in any way. But I did want to start with expressing that Samamish Public Works values the partnership with King County Natural Resources and the coordination that that team, our staff, and the council representatives conduct in this important work. And as such, I'd like to introduce Allison Agnes. She is the Kokoni Salmon Recovery Manager for King County, who will take us through the Kokoni Recovery Program update this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. I am not seeing the option to share my screen in my presentation.
Allison, I could share the PDFs if that's easier for you.
Okay.
We should be up there now?
Okay, okay then. Well, good evening. I want to thank the city council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, for allowing this presentation and for your wonderful contributions to this work. It is a great time to be receiving an update on the Kokoni Recovery Program. Next slide. For those perhaps in the audience or newer members who may not be as familiar with the program, I want to share a little bit of background about our program in action. There are many activities that we are engaged in currently to recover Kokoni, not the least of which is removing barriers to spawning habitat. And I want to acknowledge that key barriers have been removed within the city of Samamish. We are really grateful for the city's leadership in these endeavors to restore access to Zacuse Creek, improve access on E-Bright Creek, and we are all looking forward, coming online soon, to seeing Kokoni access restored to George Davis Creek as well. So kudos to you and your leadership for support in these endeavors. Thank you. Next slide. Our program is multifaceted. Again, thanks to you. The city of Samamish is represented both in our stakeholder group, the Kokoni Work Group, who is engaged in a variety of activities across the watershed, supporting Kokoni recovery, as well as at the table, and actually at the helm now, we have a newly appointed chair of our Kokoni Interlocal Agreement that funds many of our activities for the program chaired by Councilmember Kent Train. Thank you very much, Councilmember Train, for your leadership in the interlocal agreement. Next slide. Our Kokoni Work Group is made up of many active partners, not only conservation, education outreach, sportsmen and landowners, but also tribal government. The Snoqualmie Indian Tribe is a very important partner and leader in our efforts, as well as represented at the interlocal agreement. And also our local governments, including the cities around the lake in King County, as well as state and federal government partners. Next slide. So now for the good news. This last year, as I'm sure many of you noticed, we saw a lot of red in the creeks around the lake, including right here in the city of Samamish. Next slide. That red was many, many little red fish. We are seeing a potential breakthrough with the number of Kokoni returning in this last year as the second highest in our near 30-year timeframe of monitoring returns. This is showing that we are on the right track and doing some really important work, and it's starting to pay off. Next slide. And other people are noticing as well. There's been a slew of recent media coverage of the strong return and what it may mean for the future of the population. Many thanks as well to the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe for helping get the word out and share in their words what this means. Next slide. Giving a little bit more specifics on where Kokoni return, I want to highlight that E-Bright Creek and now Zacuse Creek are two of our top-producing creeks around the lake. And as well, this year, we saw a wider variety of creeks returning Kokoni, including, again, within the city of Samamish, Pine Lake Creek returning some Kokoni, as well as E-Bright and Zacuse. And just to note that that number in Zacuse Creek, 305, is the largest seen to date. Next slide. Additional pieces of good news. Not only did we see many sponsors return, many more than normal, we're also seeing record numbers of fry exit the streams around the lake, including E-Bright Creek. So we are, we, we actually, our partner, Trout Unlimited, runs a voluntary fry trapping program. If anyone in the community, the city of Samamish, wants to get out and participate in this activity as well, I would truly encourage it. It was inspiring to see so many tiny, tiny fish exiting the creeks this season. In one night, it was, I think, over actually 3,400 fry in one, in one night. So we're seeing big numbers. And, and yeah, our remote stream incubator program is also successfully hatching eggs. This is our reintroduction effort, including in Pine Lake Creek. We have really solid numbers for our hatchery supplementation efforts as well. We are looking to release quite a few fry in the fall that are being reared currently at Issaquah Hatchery, as well as local resident Wally Perea's home. And as a city of Samamish resident, want to recognize his long-going efforts to champion Kokoni recovery. We also have an active captive brood stock program, which just really means that we are, when we're creating more fertilized eggs, that we are doing so in an intentional way to maintain genetic diversity. And, and that helps us keep our Kokoni unique and best suited to the habitat around the lake. Excellent. Our fry release. So just last fall, we released 12,000 young Kokoni into the lake. That was actually a record number. And we are finding success with this strategy of extended rearing. It is, we're, we're basically holding the, the young fry that would normally be exiting right now into the fall to give them more time to grow larger and allow the lake temperatures to be cooler after summer and oxygen levels to be higher. And that is actually resulting in more survival for fish returning. This is a great celebration that we have co-hosted the Kokoni Work Group and the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. Next slide. We have some new research, and I won't go into the specifics here, but what it's showing is that we're using the best available science that we have to forecast the future for the population under different scenarios. And if you look at that second dial that's showing where we're actively investing in and making survival improvements in streams for eggs and fry, that if we continue to do those initiatives we're currently invested in, that they're improving egg and fry survival in streams, we're on the right track to a viable population over time. But if you look at that, the third dial down, that includes also addressing increased survival within the lake, you can see the trajectory of Kokoni is much greater and over a shorter period of time. So this is giving our program some hope for what we could do in addition down the road to also improve lake survival. Next slide. We are starting to look at how can we work to improve lake survival. Some of these pictures here depict some of the things that we're currently working on, including looking at removal of invasive predatory fish, looking at removal of invasive aquatic vegetation, trying to minimize artificial light at night, and better understanding in trying to prevent vectors of disease. Next slide. We have an upcoming report that will be highlighting some of the, or our priority management and research actions that will take the recovery program into the future. And there will be an opportunity for, you know, public involvement through our public meetings, the Kokoni Work Group, to engage in identifying potential management actions and ranking those. Next slide. And with that, I want to, just a break for questions and provide a big thank you for your time. In the not PDF version of this, there's an active video just showing on the left-hand side what E-Bright Creek used to look like before culvert removals, and if it would pan, and you would see these, these culverts that are quite small and, and that are uplifted off the water so that it's hard for fish to get through. And if you look on the right side, that's what it looks like today, and that's a big reason as well why we're seeing lots of little red fish coming back now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. Council, do you have questions? Councilmember Train?
Yeah, I don't really have any question, but I just wanted to make the comment that, you know, the work that the Kokoni Work Group is doing with, with all the municipalities and agencies and groups, that it's that it's a really good use of taxpayer money. And that we were looking forward to coming back to the council and letting you know what our budget is here sometime after the end of the summer so that we can make these next steps that we need to make to keep the process and the momentum going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question. As I recall, one of the outcomes from prior budget sessions is that there was going to be a priority or a process to try to elevate this work with different elected officials. Does that sound familiar? That was actually supposed to be a part of the work plan to try to promote what the Kokoni work group was doing to different municipalities and elected officials.
I, I can speak to that. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Hou. I, I can acknowledge that in our current year budget, we have funding to develop a communications plan. And certainly actions such as you have identified would likely be featured in such a plan.
Okay, so right now it's just a plan, is that right?
Technically, we, we, we are in, yeah, we, we would want to develop a, a plan to make sure that we are identifying those actions that will best help with recovery from a communication perspective. But certainly reaching elected officials is, is an important way in which to do so. The Kokoni work group itself has been doing some letter writing, some work kind of like mostly through the Riot 8 Legislative Subcommittee and in coordination with Riot 8 in some letter writing to state agencies and the governor, in fact.
How are you feeling about funding even the budget discussions that are going on at the state level?
For the Kokoni program, we do not currently receive state money.
Is it county?
But it is a concern for salmon in, in general.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for your help with that. And I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we have, up if, if, unless anyone else, oh, sorry. Councilmember Gupta.
Yeah, I just wanted to. I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. I know we set this up a few months ago, so happy to receive it. Super encouraging to see a positive return. I know the returns were struggling for several years in a row. There's serious concerns, so it's nice to see that the time and effort that KWG has put is showing dividends. My understanding is the, the Kokoni have, there's some expectation of like a three-year return cycle, so for the next two years, it might not be as high, but hopefully this, as you said, affirms that we're headed in the right direction. We know what we can do to make sure that that next high point of a return is again, positive. So thank you so much for, for coming. I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you.
Councilmember Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor. Allison, thank you for your presentation. I just had a quick question. Are the Kokoni that we're seeing returning, are these mostly Kokoni salmon that have been raised at the hatchery? Or are we seeing any more kind of, I don't know what the correct term is, wild or native Kokoni returning? Or is it primarily fry that have come from the hatchery?
We, we do, we do have fry that, we, we, we are able to mark the fry that are originating from the hatchery and so that we can tell when we sample fish after they have spawned, if they were in, you know, from the hatchery or not. And we have a mix of both. And I will just acknowledge that our hatchery program is designed as a conservation hatchery and what we call integrated so that we are taking the eggs from the wild fish. We are taking some what they call green spawners out from the creeks and crossing them. And we are actually freezing milt from, from a number of cohorts so that we're not crossing fish that are related. And we're able to really bolster our egg production, fertilized egg production with a captive brood stock program where we actually ship the eggs off to Orcas Island and grow them out to be adult fish, or they then become again crossed and brought back to the hatchery. So it's, it's quite a production to keep the genetics, you know, consistent. But we do still have our distinct and unique Lake Samamish Kokoni, thanks to all of those efforts.
And then is the goal, Allison, to eventually see the Kokoni surviving without hatchery support?
Yes, yes. The goal is to have, you know, a viable and sustainable population that is, that is self-sustaining and also, you know, is supportive of harvest opportunity.
Okay, thank you so much.
If there's no more questions, then thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate your time very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
We'll be moving next to the, another presentation, which is the Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan with Greg and Stephanie.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I'm going to pass over the introductions to Stephanie Sullivan, our Senior Stormwater Program Manager. And her and her team will walk you through the fine work they're doing on the Pine Creek Basin Plan for this year.
Thank you, Greg. For the record, Stephanie Sullivan, Senior Stormwater Program Manager. And if we could get Toby Canon back on the presentation as well, he's our senior engineer who is managing the project.
Thank you, Stephanie. Have I successfully shared here?
Not yet.
Okay.
There we go.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. We're really excited to be here to talk about the draft Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan and give you a project update. So going into the presentation topics, we'll first discuss the connection of basin planning to our citywide comprehensive plan, as well as go into what is a basin plan? What is a watershed? And why this process is so important to our planning and projects that we create? Then Toby will go into an update of the project itself and discuss how we, we will be collecting community feedback and some specific questions for council to consider. So, starting with our comprehensive plan and the citywide goals, this really sets the vision, as you know, for the community. And in the environment element of that citywide comprehensive plan, it adopts by reference these basin plans as an important tool for us to identify the health of watersheds and how we can improve them. Diving into even more detail, the Surface and Stormwater Comprehensive Plan identifies objectives and actions by which we can further use these basin planning processes and focus in on the watershed level, what can be done to improve the health. So the basin plans engage the community to develop solutions and that recommend programs and projects that then we can wrap into our capital planning process as well as our NPDES permit actions that will play into the budget cycle. So the programs and capital improvement plan get wrapped into the two-year budget cycle as funding allows. And as a really important part of the stormwater utility, the basin planning process was adopted as part of our enhanced level of service. So going into what is a basin? So the city has 14 basins within our city limits. And a basin plan helps us set goals and accomplish overall improvements in the water quality and watershed conditions that focus on the important aspects that the community feels are important to address. So watershed itself is specifically a geographic area that drains to a water body, could be a creek, a lake, a wetland, et cetera. So basin planning is a holistic process by which we engage the community and select those management strategies. And notably, our non-point source pollution is posing the greatest threat to our water quality. So I want to mention that we do all have a shared responsibility to help keep our watersheds healthy. So the basin plan itself ends up being a report card. The scientific data we collect establishes what is the health of the basin and allows us to find those specific factors that we can address to protect and improve the habitat. It also recommends those projects and actions that then we can prioritize over time. So since incorporation, the city has been able to complete several basin plans. And I'll also point out, the highlighted area in purple is the East Lake Samamish Basin. And within that basin is the Pine Lake and Pine Lake Creek watersheds, highlighted in red. And so Toby will go into the details of the plan.
Great, thank you, Stephanie. Yeah, I'm here to let you know, you know, what, what is our basin plan? What are we doing here today? And, you know, how we're moving this forward. Real briefly, as Stephanie noted, a basin plan is effectively a report card on a, you know, specific watershed within the city. And these have a fairly discreet formula that we follow as we pursue these. And I wanted to touch base on a few of those. First, most important element that we start with is just data collection and review, kind of understanding what resources are available. This also includes some physical data collection such as geotechnical information and a lot of record and review. We also touch base with our maintenance and operations staff and, you know, get an understanding of issues that they may identify and we may be ignorant of. So that's a first, you know, critical part of it. The second area we dive into is our watershed characterization and analysis. And this is more of a deep dive of an assessment and review of, you know, some of the different factors at play here. And, you know, that gives us an understanding of how the basin performs. We conduct a detailed hydrologic analysis to kind of model stream behavior in response to rainfall events and understand how, you know, how the system really performs on a, you know, macro level. This gives us a, just a real detailed understanding of, you know, how the basin operates. Another key component is outreach and community involvement. Probably the most important resource we have is the people that live in this area. You know, they see it every day. They know what's working. They have concerns. So we have a real aggressive outreach program associated with each of our basin plans. You know, we take these three items and we use that to identify then issues and concerns, you know, problem areas that are apparent within the basin. And through that, we kind of come up with a list of priorities and what have you that we want to tackle. And that ultimately culminates in, you know, the series of recommendations, specific programs and projects, and sometimes strategies and policies. And ultimately, that's, you know, that is the why we're doing this. You know, is taking this information, taking this assessment and translating that into actionable activities that we can pursue to better the basin health. Real briefly, I wanted to touch on our schedule as well. Basin plans generally run about a two-year cycle. We've tried to compress that and it never seems to work. So we're sticking with our two-year calendar as a minimum. The highlights that I wanted to outline are, you know, the aggressive outreach that we pursued, the stakeholder meetings and open houses, as well as our current status where we drafted the plan. We're bringing a draft forward at this point. And right now, we're in the midst of the SEPA review. That's intended to wrap up at the end of this month. And that's another opportunity for public comment and as well as a council to weigh in. Unless we encounter some real hiccups through that exercise, we're anticipating bringing the final plan to council next June for adoption. Feedback. As I noted, we do have this aggressive public engagement process. And it's important to, you know, I think, drill down into some of the real important, critical things that we heard. And probably the loudest voice was from the lakefront homeowners. And they were very clear that they wanted more information. I think they all recognize an incredible resource that they have the luxury of living on. And this is also shared by a lot of people within the basin. You know, what can we do to help the lake? What are the opportunities, you know, that we have for engagement? How can we, you know, do better as stewards for this resource? And that was, that came in loud and clear. Another thing that we heard frequently involved the two primary streams that bisect the basin, Pine Lake Creek and Canem Creek. As Allison noted in her last presentation that, you know, for the first time in a long time, there was actually Kokoni observed in Pine Lake Creek. Pine Lake Creek is identified as one of the, you know, key native streams where Kokoni used to, you know, spawn and migrate in great numbers. I think one of the things that we would love to see is to have those numbers come back. And these, those concerns were echoed by the people that we spoke with during the public engagement. Another element that we heard was more kind of clinical concerns about the lake. Do we have algae problems? Do we have weed growth problems? That was a pretty significant voice. I think the summer that we conducted a lot of this activity happened to be a particularly weedy summer on the lake. So that might have had something to do with amplifying that, that voice. But nonetheless, that is a repeated, repeated refrain that we hear. And then we also heard a kind of breaking these things into buckets. A fair number of people had specific ideas and improvements within the basin, what we could do to tackle specific issues. None of these were earth-shattering, but, you know, there's a, a significant number of just good ideas out there with the public. Our analysis, this is a lion's share of the work involved in the basin planning effort. Is this detailed, you know, deep dive into the condition of the basement, basin, excuse me. Very generally, the condition of the basin is good. That's the primary takeaway through this exercise. A lot of that has to do with the fact that there's significant amount of intact, you know, wooded land cover. And ultimately, that's in small part a reflection of our zoning, which, you know, is less dense than many of the other areas within the plateau. The other thing that, you know, we'd point out with the condition assessment is the, you know, the significance of wetlands in the basin. Particularly, there's a large sphagnum bog on the east side or west side of, you know, 212th. And that's a significant, you know, sponge that really impacts the overall hydrology of the basin. As we noted, it's predominated by two streams, Canem and Pine Lake Creek. These largely intact stream systems are consistent with their historic alignment. There's been minimal disruption, but we do see some erosion and other impacts associated with development. And then obviously, the lake is, you know, big element within the basin. That's the obvious one that everybody can point to. And generally, you know, is, as an urban lake with, you know, a lot of development around it, Pine Lake is in good shape. Another key part of our assessment is evaluating the water quality. Generally, we found this to be, you know, good. You know, they conducted water quality sampling in multiple locations within the basin. We did not turn up anything alarming. One thing I did want to point out is ecology is compelled through the Clean Water Act to report, you know, violations of the Clean Water Act. And one that does occasionally crop up within the basin is, you know, water temperature issues within Pine Lake Creek. And that's what that 303D listing is about. That's on our state database for water quality problems. The third area we dove into is the infrastructure. You know, the basin development, a lot of the subdivisions are, you know, kind of 1960s to 1980s vintage. The condition of the, you know, hardware within those subdivisions is, you know, predictable. And it's kind of midway through its life cycle. It's, it's not brand new, but it's not falling apart either. A second part of that I want to point out is the A second part of that I want to point out is the detention facilities and water quality facilities are kind of reflective of the time that they were built. And in that respect, they do not meet current standards. You know, and that's an area that we targeted and identified as, hey, this is an opportunity within the basin. And then ultimately, you know, kind of compiling this information, you know, what does this tell us in terms of direction and, you know, where do we want to take this? There really are very few acute problems within the basin that demand immediate attention. You know, that's a, that's a good thing. It's pretty unique within the city. I think if we drove around, there's, there's always something that needs to be fixed within the Pine Lake Creek basin, and that was really at a minimum. In terms of our approach, what we recommend doing to pursue some of these is really just target some of these isolated problems. And as the other kind of side of that equation is recognizing that some of these older facilities really could be updated. And then the third part of that is really just continue to preserve what's working. You know, we've got this great resource of, you know, wooded land and what have you. So another element of our, our focus was trying to, you know, suggest opportunities to continue that. We, as part of the basin planning process, as I noted, we develop, you know, specific projects and programs to advance the goals of the basin plan. And in this case, we identified six specific capital projects that will benefit the basin. You'll notice two colors up there in the dots, blue and red. The red ones have been advanced to the city's capital improvement plan, the stormwater plan. And those two projects have actually already begun. But these are nonetheless included into the basin because, you know, it fits in the broader framework of improving the watershed. And then the blue dots correspond to, you know, recommendations for new projects. You'll notice they're kind of clustered around the, you know, the downstream end of the basin. And this is largely because it corresponds to some of the older developments within the basin where facility design is outdated. These will be brought forward and included in the SWIP and ultimately land on our CIP. Three of the four of these represent just basic retrofit programs. And that's a, you know, a key drive within our NPDES permit. It's just trying to shore up existing facilities through retrofit work. And then the fourth one is a pilot project. And it's a utilization of low-impact development techniques and how we can benefit water quality through that. Moving on to our programs, we identified three. We had a lengthy list, but what we recognized. First, there's, you know, the condition of the basin, you know, the, the benefit for a lot of these were, you know, was fairly marginal simply because, you know, we are starting at such a high place. And then the second one that we recognized was that, you know, we are looking at some redundancy where, you know, the programs that we initially contemplated were better suited perhaps for an existing program within the Parks Department, for example. So we ultimately pared it down to these three. And, you know, the first one is a response to the public's comments about wanting more education, particularly focused on those individuals that live in and around the lake. So the goal here is to develop, you know, an education program. This would build on the city's existing infrastructure for communication, you know, their website, social media and, you know, communications team. But ultimately, the goal is to, you know, raise the bar in terms of awareness around the lake, you know, behaviors that are helpful, behaviors that aren't, you know, you know, try to trigger, you know, behavioral modifications that'll help that lake. The second program was, we've identified it here as Property Acquisition Fund. I want to be clear that that fund exists, it's being funded. And ultimately, what we're trying to do is just provide some framework and some steerage, if you will, for the use of that money. You know, develop a prioritization tool that we can help with the spending of the funds. And then the third program that we developed was a bog education program. Within King County, there's several dozen of these sphagnum bogs. These date back, some of them to the last ice age. They're really unique wetland systems. And Samamish is blessed with having a handful of these. People drive by them every day and don't realize that this thing's been here for 5,000 years. So one of the things we wanted to do, and this is would be a new program, is just put together some form of educational materials, perhaps collaborate with parks, but ultimately develop, you know, some structure around informing the public of this really unique resource within the community. Looking at our next steps, as I noted, we've had a original presentation or initial presentation, excuse me, last year. And this brings us to today for the second where we're presenting our draft plan. This is, as I noted, going through SEPA, Environmental Review. That's slated to conclude on April 30th with a threshold determination. And we are inviting comments up to that time. We won't slam the door on anybody if somebody comes in with other thoughts, but both council and the public are encouraged to participate in that. The last thing I do is point out how you can share your comments. We've got, you know, good, robust website. My email address is on there. It's, you can Google Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan, and I can confirm that that is the first thing that shows up. So do look into it and share your thoughts. As we move into questions, I just wanted to give you a few prompts here about, you know, you know, things that came to our mind that you may want to know. But with that, I'm going to stop sharing and we can answer questions.
Council. Thank you for the presentation. That was really helpful to understand what's going on. Councilmember Gupta.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I think I was in one of the very early community meetings in 2023, so it's great to see this coming forward. I do remember at that meeting, there was, we had a lot of private property owners there. And in the report for this, the draft report for this plan, it mentioned there were several capital projects identified specifically for riparian restoration that were on private property, but they were eliminated from the project list. So I wanted, there is a note there that grants may be available to the Washington State RCO. So those projects are still retained, they're just off the RCP because, you know, we don't control the property. But I just wanted to see if there was some thought to making a more formal framework to try and push those projects forward. Because it seemed like there's a lot of interest in '23. And from what I remember, there was significant interest in collaboration and really working with those private property owners. So I just wanted to see if there is some way that we can try and push that forward, understanding that it is, it is difficult, you know, working with private property owners on what could be a inexpensive and time-consuming project.
No, thank you for that. And as well for refreshing my memory on the, you know, through that stakeholder meeting. But that is something that we, you know, have, you know, batted around internally as to whether we can find these plans explicitly to public, publicly funded, publicly owned, public property improvements, or if we expand it to private. And I think you're right that, you know, the decision has been made to try to, you know, draw a line. The RCO grants, I think they've probably got 20 to 25 different grant programs available for any number of things. That seems the most, you know, the best fit, if you will, in terms of opportunities. King County also has a long, you know, history of, you know, supporting community grant-type programs. As far as the city itself, you know, our staff moving forward with a program to try to coordinate with private property owners to advance some of these things to an actual project. You know, I can't speak to the direction that that would go, but I do know that, you know, current discussions don't include that. And it's largely a function of, you know, available, you know, staffing at this point. You know, there's also the issue of budget that we're all keep be aware of. So there's, you know, there's a few elements of this that, you know, you know, you're pushing it up a hill that's getting a little bit steeper. And, but that's not to say that there's absolutely general recognition of the value of that. And to your point, you know, some of the locations and some of the resources that happen to be on private property are, you know, wonderful, you know, and they, they warrant preservation. And, you know, the question is, how do we do that? So, you know, it's the current, I can comment on the State of the Union, if you will, and, you know, where we're going with it. But I think a deeper dive is, you know, kind of land on Stephanie and Greg's lap, so.
I think it would just be a coordination of opportunity. If a private owner that's sharing abutting properties with us and we had plans to improve something very close to them, and they had something that they wanted to do as well, we would always take the opportunity to have those discussions so that they could maximize the opportunity to, to improve their, their properties. But as we, we have to improve the public areas first. So we can't do gift of public funds on private property. It's really, like you mentioned, it's the opportunity of coordination, working with the public as we work for the public. So we always are willing to have discussions. We work for the public, we want to have those open dialogue, but also doing the right thing and being steward of the funds appropriately as well.
Great, thank you. And I had one more question. I guess maybe the, the way that we are addressing that going forward is the education program, which I remember there also being quite a lot of excitement about. And I just, I know Mid-Sound Fisheries and the Lake Smamish Urban Wildlife Refuge Partnership are both doing a lot of work on lake education. And so I know we're, we would like to put together a program. I think in the presentation is mentioned, working with parks. I would just, if we are not already working with those organizations, I know they're doing a lot of the same stuff. So maybe there's some opportunity for coordination. Thank you.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Deputy Mayor Lamb.
Yeah, I had a question regarding, I guess, Pine Lake. We have the Beaver Lake Management Board or Commission, and there isn't one for Pine Lake. And I was always wondering why that is. And given that there are concerns, as you were saying, a lot of, that the people around the lake have, have concerns, would something similar to the Beaver Lake Management Board for Pine Lake, would that help?
That's a a very good question and a very good observation. We, I am the staff rep for the Beaver Lake Management District. And just for general understanding, you know, that's enabled through state legislation as a district that has taxing authority and there's specific efforts that are, you know, supported through that. And we actually broached that subject and presented it to the community because it seemed like a lot of the concerns that we did hear were tailor-made for a lake management district that can be formed, you know, with really any pretense. It's like, we want to do X, or we want to do Y, or we want to do both X and Y. So there's a lot of opportunity there. But ultimately, the, you know, inertia is a pretty powerful force. I think that might have been a little bit of it. I think, you know, the public's never, you know, going to jump up and down and embrace attacks of any sort. You know, there's a little bit of that, I think that might have come into play. But the, ultimately, I think what we worked toward was, you know, a lot of the activities that people were talking about could be resident-driven. And I think that's where we started to see an opportunity with the education and outreach program and really kind of targeting those lakefront homeowners that were, you know, the most vocal about some of these concerns. You know, Lake Management District is not off the table. But it ultimately, you know, as we kind of weighed the nuances of the communications that we did have with the residents, we concluded that it, it would be a tough thing to recommend within the context of the basin plan. So for that reason, we, we did not include it. My brain was going the same place yours was, so thank you for that question.
No, that, that's great. So it's, I mean, just looking at the capital plans are pretty far away from the lake, but it sounds like if there was something closer to the lake, then that would be an appropriate avenue just because, you know, it could help fund some of the projects if there were any. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Toby, would you mind putting back up the questions that you had for council? Because I want to make sure that we kind of get through those if we can. I did have a comment about the bog in that I know that the Klahani neighborhood is quite proud of the Queen's Bog. And so there just seems like an opportunity to have a bog map and explanation and education that sounds like a very much a Parks Department sort of strong suit. And that looked like an interesting opportunity. My question did have to do with the map you showed originally, just of the size of that basin area. I was trying to understand how much of that has already been built out? Because I'm trying to look into the future in terms of changes that might happen over time that would continue to, to add to our costs as we look forward. But it occurred to me that maybe much of that has already been built out, but I didn't know.
That's, yeah, that's a valid thing. And that is something that we did look at. You know, we'd looked at the land use patterns within the basin. You know, we actually, in terms of growth potential, we looked at the community development, put together housing inventory analysis and had, you know, long-term growth projections associated with that. So that was factored in to pretend, as a way to consider potential changes within the basin. And what we found, you know, within this R1 area, I think the expectation is just the nature of the housing in there and the ability to do any kind of meaningful infill suggests that that's probably never going to change. At least not in our lifetime or in the, you know, the timeline of our 20-year comp plan. So the areas of more concern, if you will, more likely to see development are, you know, further east toward 228th and some of the infill type development we see. And what we've actually observed, and this is supported not just through the basin plan work, but, you know, remember the E89 studies we did evaluating the town center runoff? One of the takeaways from that was that development, you know, it's counterintuitive, but the current, you know, some of these 1970 era ponds where water just kind of whistled through and there was no effort to treat water quality. In comparison to that, redeveloping actually reduced the amount of runoff. You know, and it gave an opportunity for water to get into the ground. So there was really no net detriment, if you will, to development because of the current standards, it's more restrictive. So that was a, you know, an interesting takeaway from this. I think we're in that kind of is what motivated us to contemplate, you know, what are the real targets for retrofit work? You know, we see that when we do redevelopment. What if we did it to existing development? And again, that's, you know, that is the direction, you know, the city's, you know, pointing a lot of stormwater projects. And that's supported by the NPDES effort as well. I'm not sure if that answers all your question or some of it, but.
It does. It gets to the question that I had because I was just trying to understand, you know, that crystal ball future thing. But I also wanted to know if there was other questions that you had on your list that we could address.
And these, these are more prompts than questions.
Okay.
And feel free to.
Do you want to put those back up, Toby, so that they could see them?
Never easy.
Yes. I get used to Teams and I move to Zoom.
There we go. Council, anybody want to address any of these questions or have staff address these? Councilmember Treen.
Thank you, Mayor. Toby, so let's just start from Lake Smamish coming up. What, what's the barrier or the condition of the stream there at East Lakes Mammoth Parkway?
East of the Parkway, it is very good. It goes through a riparian corridor with minimal development. There's a significant wetland there. There is some undercutting associated with erosion. But, you know, generally, the, you know, the tree canopy, all the other, you know, natural features that support, you know, good stream health are intact. What we typically see around the Parkway and that area that was initially developed, that's where the problems are. There is a culvert on private property between the Parkway and the lake, which is a partial barrier to fish passage. Somebody planted two sequoias some years ago that are now. some years ago that are now just massive trees. And any work on improving some of those culverts would require visiting the, you know, those two trees. So there's, there's a number of challenges in place. The culvert within the Parkway or beneath the Parkway is actually in pretty good shape. But, yeah, it's, you know, it's that last, you know, 150, 200 feet from the lake upstream that poses a challenge.
It's pretty challenge, it's a channel. Because of those two trees, it just becomes a really narrow channel where the water runs real fast, especially when we have a high volume. And is there any, have you put a placeholder in the plan for a larger fish passage culvert, or instead of the culvert, removing that and...
We did not include that. And I think the big challenge there is work on private property. As we noted, there's some hiccups there. That gets particularly thorny when you're dealing with Lake Somamish waterfront property. And the second element is, you know, is cost. You know, the basin plan, you know, one of the things we seek to do is recommend, you know, bang for your buck projects, if you will. But, yeah, this is something that's, we've looked at. It's obviously on the Cockney Work Group's radar as a potential target for replacement. And I think that, you know, the mechanism, if you will, that would advance that to the city's SWIP and CIP would look different than a basin plan because it is such an acute, you know, high-cost project that has a lot of atypical constraints associated with it.
And then, so then go to the other end of the basin and to the lake. What's the, what's the plan for retrofitting or some project that would be necessary to enhance water quality at, at the lake where it dumps into the stream?
The, the biggest challenge we've seen with Pine Lake is, you know, summer flows, you know, it dries up. And the water level in the lake has varied as much as over three feet, you know, 40, 44 inches, I think, was the greatest seasonal. We do have one capital project that's on the books, retrofit at the corner of 228th and 24th. And, you know, that, it handles a lot of untreated water that makes its way into the lake now. So that's typical of what would be necessary on a capital side to improve water quality.
That's on, that's on 228th side. How about on the other side of the lake? Is there anything that needs to go on there as, as it's leaving the lake and coming down the plateau?
Generally, the, you know, the, the density starts to drop in terms of housing. And there's also newer subdivisions, you know, as you get toward 212th. So the water quality, you know, you know, problems, if you will, are most acute around the lake, simply because of the age of the, the facilities or the lack of facilities. But that would be, you know, the key. Yeah, the biggest challenge we saw with Pine Lake Creek really is just, you know, maintaining winter water levels or suffering water levels, because that is big, upper section of that is seasonal.
And do we have any kind of flow control on the lake now, or is that something we'd have to add to it?
There is a weir that controls the outlet of the lake. That was built by, I think, the Washington Department of Fisheries before it merged with Fish and Wildlife. They own it. We have been asked to, you know, consider how we address that. And it is not a piece of city hardware. We have an easement to go inspect it, which kind of implies a duty. But we, you know, we actually sought legal opinion as to what our obligation and what role the city really should be playing with this. And the advice from there was that this is not a city, city facility, so it, it is not in your interest to start maintaining it. My understanding is it's largely been maintained by neighbors. So it's like a lot of things.
So, so, so again, I don't know where to take this except for to say, it seems to me the weir is a challenge. And if it's not functioning properly, then it's a challenge that may or should be addressed in the future. So my question is, would that be in the basin plan, or would that be then something you would look, we would look at as a capital project?
I think, I'll preface this by saying, you know, the framework for it arriving as a capital project, you know, just take it on faith that we navigated that and it landed as such. The big challenge that, that project would face is, you know, you noted, is it functioning properly? And there is 150 waterfront homeowners on Lake Pine Lake, and there's probably 140 opinions on what proper function is. So there's some foundational challenges to advancing that in any way. They need to be tackled before we, you know, consider, is this a capital plan? Is this, you know, a Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan project? Or how does this work? So, but that's, that's been something that's been on our radar, frankly, for, well, since I've gotten here.
Yeah. Thanks, Toby.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentation. If there's no more questions, we will move right into the next presentation then. So this is unfinished business, let's see, new business, sorry, introduction to the 2026-2031 Transportation Improvement Plan, the TIP, Stormwater Improvement Plan, SWIP. And we have Greg, Stephanie, and Toby online right now.
I think actually Lindsey Channing will be joining us instead of Toby. But, but thank you, Mayor. Again, Greg Stamatia, Somamish Public Works. And we are in the starting phases of our TIP, which is acronym for our Transportation Improvement Plan and our SWIP season, which is our Stormwater Improvement Plan. We will give you a overview of where we are and where we are heading. This isn't supposed to be down into the weeds details of project specifics. Those will be in future presentations, and we will outline those coming up, coming up forward. But at present, let's get onto the second slide. This presentation today will be discussing what these plans are, how the plans are created, how do we fund our capital projects. And as I mentioned, we are trying to keep this at a, into a high level detail of, of where, where these programs are and where they're going to be going to get to approval. Life cycles of public works projects. Audrey and I have presented this to you multiple times, including a couple of weeks ago with the pavement management plan. But the life cycle of a standard capital project starts where we're at today with these discussions in the planning phase. Once the plans have become approved, we will take those into design phase. We then construct, which is my personal favorite phase of, of a capital project. Our crews then maintain those projects, and then we go into the rehabilitation and replacement cycle, which was also discussed a couple of weeks ago with our pavement management planned. This is a capital plan specific to these two. The TIP and the SWIP are annual evaluations of what projects we should do over the next six-year cycle. We use standard metrics to rate and score projects. The TIP and SWIP identify planned expenditures and funding for each project and/or program. And as a reminder to the city council, the TIP is required by RCW to be submitted annually to WashDOT, and we'll detail those dates at a later slide. Capital planning for public works. At the highest level, we use our city visions and our comprehensive plans and other community input and/or other plans, including corridor studies, like the Sahali Corridor Study that Jed Ireland has presented to you and is coming up to present again, basin plans, like the Pine Creek Plan that Toby and Stephanie just detailed to you, and other information shown on the far-right blue box there. To create a six-year TIP and SWIP, those TIPS and SWIPS are submitted to our finance department and are submitted to the overall citywide capital improvement plan, which then leads into our two-year budget cycle submittals. Now, the staff, which will be led by Stephanie Sullivan, again, with our stormwater engineering team, and Lindsey Channing with our transportation planning team, will detail the TIP and the SWIP at more of the thousand-foot level. And I'm going to be turning over the presentation to Lindsey at the present.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this slide is showing you that we do have prioritization criteria for our projects in both the TIP and the SWIP because they are different types of projects. Of course, we have different criteria, but they both have a maximum score of up to 100 points. Both criteria have been used in previous years. They were used last year and years prior as well. So this is not new criteria that council or the public is seeing this year. Also, I'd like to point out that since there are different types of projects, transportation-related versus stormwater, we have varying criteria. But a couple that I'd like to point out that you'll see are important for both of our capital plans is environmental and safety. So we're excited to be able to continue to use this criteria for consistency purposes, and we think that it has a broad and robust ability to help us fairly score projects for our capital plans. Next slide, please. Just to briefly give you that, that thousand-foot level of how we look at revenue assumptions for both of our capital plans. We have four main buckets, if you will, for funding sources. So we have the 340 Fund, which is our transportation fund. We have the Stormwater 438 Fund. And then there's grants that could be from the local, state, or federal level. And then we also have the opportunity for various partnerships with organizations such as private partnerships, agencies like King County and City of Iwizaqua or WashDOT, and then any schools that we might be able to partner with, just as some examples. Overall, both the TIP and the SWIP start by using the beginning fund balance for the year that starts the six years. So in this instance, for what we're looking at this evening is the 2026-2031. So we'll start with the beginning fund balance for 2026 for both the transportation fund and the stormwater capital fund. Then, next level down is the REIT and TIF. Thanks, Greg. And those apply within the transportation funds, because the TIF is the traffic impact fees, REIT is real estate excise tax. And then for stormwater, there's the stormwater management fees that they also can take a look at and utilize within the stormwater project. Next slide, please. So for the Transportation Improvement Plan itself, you'll see this image, this color-coded image here on the screen, that is a screenshot of last year's TIP. This year's will look very similar. We've worked hard to have a consistent format that's transparent for both council and the public, so that they can easily understand the different programs and project categories that we have, and then the ranking of projects within each of those. At the bottom of our TIP each year, we also have a couple of tables that show what was included that's new and what had changed, whether it was something was completed or was removed for various reasons or modified. We also include a funded program and project guide that gives more detailed information about projects that were, are proposed to be funded through the TIP. And they each get a dedicated page or two. It helps relate back to where the projects came from, whether it might have been a comprehensive plan or a transportation master plan project, things of that nature from the TIP standpoint. And then we try to provide photos and/or map of the location of the projects. And then lastly, just to let you know, that we keep our TIP webpage updated regularly. So we have that bit.ly link there, and the QR code does take you to our project page. On this page, you'll be able to find all existing approved tips that we have. And then in, during the first week of May, we plan on having the draft documents for this year's 2026-2031 TIP available to start looking at. And then, of course, it will be included with our next Agenda Bill. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie to talk through the SWIP.
Thank you, Lindsey. Thank you, Greg. Good evening, Council. Similarly, the SWIP contents look very similar to the TIP, so color-coded with the programs. And we will be continuing the ongoing programmatic funding for drainage resolutions, pipe rehabilitation, facility retrofits, and restoration programs. And the individual projects will also be listed, especially when they're above the $300,000 mark. It allows us to track those projects specifically to meet bidding requirements. And additionally, the SWIP guide will explain the details, such as revenues, project prioritization, if the projects came from a maintenance issue or basin plan, and also how they support city goals. And finally, our QR code will take you to our SWIP webpage where you can see the previously adopted SWIP. And we also look forward to including a crosswalk of what is changing for the 26 to 2031 SWIP. And the documents will be available in early May.
Yeah, thank you. For next steps, I would also add that any search engine, as I use it pretty regularly, if you type Somamish SWIP or Somamish TIP, it'll take you right there as well. Very, very easy to navigate those. So on the week of May 5th, as both Lindsey and Stephanie mentioned, we will have the draft documents for each, the, each of the TIP and the SWIP capital plans available on those individual websites. On May 20th, at the council meeting, we plan to discuss the draft TIP and open the public hearing for both of those plans. On June 3rd, we hope to continue the public hearing and move for adoption of both the TIP and the SWIP. And then with approval, Lindsey will submit, as she does it annually, the approved TIP to WashDOT. There is no approval process required for the SWIP, only the TIP. Thank you. And our team is available for any questions that the council may have for us.
Counsel. Well, I can't let this go.
I thought we just wowed you, and there was no questions.
Well, there was, there was a fair amount of wow factor with this. Actually, I do have a question. It has to do with, once you submit to WashDOT, do, do you get comments back, or do they just rubber stamp it? What happens?
I can take that. Thank you, Mayor. It is a requirement through RCW that WashDOT has each jurisdiction's adopted TIP on record and in their possession, but they do not typically provide comments back to us.
Other than thank you, right?
Yes. I typically get a confirmation. There's been a year or two where I've needed to follow up to make sure that they did, in fact, receive it, but...
Because would they chase you down?
I'm not sure. I've not had that happen because we've been very diligent about making sure we submit.
Mayor, if I may, I think the, the more pertinent piece is that we wouldn't be eligible for state grants and others if we don't have an adopted TIP that is
Right.
within receipt, on file with WashDOT. So that's one of the checkboxes that you have to have. So really, it's about coordination at the end of the day.
Okay. It's an important checkbox. Well, you clearly bowed us, so thank you very much for the presentation this evening, and I really appreciate it. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel. We now can go to council reports. City Manager, would you like to go first, or would you like Deputy Mayor Lamb to go?
Mayor, it's entirely up to you. I'm flexible.
Well, it just seemed like we always stole your thumb, thunder, and I just, I wanted to give you a kind of ample opportunity.
It's totally fine. Steal away. It's totally fine. Steal away.
Okay. Then Deputy Mayor Lamb, if you wouldn't mind going first. I'm just following up on the Solid Waste Committee meeting that I had last week. It seemed like such a long time ago. We had a rate discussion, and rates, again, are going up. It is about, it's 2%, but that is just on the disposal side of it. So we don't know yet what it is going to be on the service side of it, which is the republic side. And so those numbers are forthcoming. Okay, thank you for that. Related and completely unrelated, I did see that the RAP Act was, finally looked like it was passing.
Oh, really?
Yes. So it's, that was a Senate bill. City Manager, do you have something for us?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to remind Council that because of the way the calendar falls, there are actually five Tuesdays this month, so we will not be meeting again for two weeks. But that doesn't mean to say that things aren't happening. So a couple of quick reminders for Council and the community, that this is Earth Week. There are volunteer restoration events going on this week. There's still a couple available. If folks want to do that, you can jump on our website and find that volunteer signup form if you're interested. And then Saturday is Earth Day. Please come and join us at Beaver Lake Lodge between 11 and 2 for all the Earth Day festivities. And there are lots of fun, family-friendly activities, and hopefully everybody will take the opportunity, and the weather will hold up, my fingers are crossed here, for that event. Along those same lines, there was mention of this Holly Way Corridor Project. The, there is an open house for that project on Thursday, April 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 here at City Hall. And there's an online survey that is open through October, not October, excuse me, April 30th. It's not open that long, through April 30th, for those folks that want to get their comments into the project team. So please come out and join us on the 24th. I know the team would love to hear, continue to hear from the community. And last but not least, and this is an exciting part, the weather's getting nicer, and that means that there are lots of outdoor things, and the farmers market is kicking off on Wednesday. May 7th is opening day. And there will be a small, a small event starting to kick the, the market off, but we want to encourage the community to come on out and join us. And hopefully, the weather will get nicer as the weeks go on. But we're very excited to have our partners at the chamber to be able to have the market up and running again this year. So looking forward to seeing everybody out there. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Other reports from other folks? Councilmember Guta?
Yes, I just wanted to highlight that I did send the notes from the last PIC meeting. We did talk about wastewater rates. They're going up 7.5% for 2026 and starting at 12.7, 12.75% and up for the next five years after that. So significant increases, significant concern among communities. And Kirkland is putting forward a proposal to have a utilities affordability summit in spring of '26. More information to come on that, but I just wanted to make sure that was on everyone's radar.
If there are no other reports, then perhaps we could have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Have a good evening, everyone.